For October nineteenth. Did you all join me to the Pledge of Allegiance? DCTV, do you have the flag? There it is. Okay. I pledge allegiance. If you'd all please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women past and present, who helped protect us and our great country. And please keep in mind the, the medical heroes that are keeping us safe from the pandemic. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Okay, there we have. So first item on the agenda is a, it's at six forty-one, new common vic license for Metro Pizza, one of my favorite places. Transfer of ownership. Okay, is there someone here?
Yep.
Yes.
So what are you?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed you.
The guy standing with the McDonald's sign behind him.
Yes, that's me.
Would you?
That's me.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to tell us about your new endeavor?
We, it's, we are three partners. We're gonna buy Metro Pizza and Sandwich and gonna keep it as is.
Okay, cuz that, cuz that was my question. I'm a long time customer.
Don't worry, it's gonna be the same thing, the same thing. We're not gonna change anything.
Okay.
Are you, are you purchasing the entire business in the other locations still?
No, 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 no.
Just the Dartmouth location?
Just, yeah, just Dartmouth's location, sure.
Yeah, that was all, all three of those are separately owned, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one on the south end is a former wife.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, and you're gonna, you're gonna cut all the prices in half, right? Is that what I heard you say?
Or maybe double it.
So I may be a former customer one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion and a second. Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson? Stanley, you're mic muted.
Yeah, I know, yes.
Okay, and me, yes. So we wish you good luck in your endeavor.
Thank you, sir.
I'll see you there.
You're soon. Thank you.
Okay, new business. Environmental Affairs Coordinator introduction and contract approval. Mr. Garrett, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any folks have any questions, comments?
I, I guess, I think maybe publicly, can I just give a little bit of information?
Please do, yep.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, in September of this year, Mike O'Reilly, who was the longtime Environmental Affairs Coordinator, retired. He used some accrued time over the summer. In that time, Mark Garrett, who's been here, I think, six years as the Conservation Agent, filled in for Mike's role and his own role over the summer, did an amazing job, really keeping the department going, you know, particularly in light of COVID, you know, Conservation still stayed very busy. So he, he worked well internally with staff. I think Mike Keough here is the Chair of the Conservation Commission, he can attest to, you know, how well Mark worked with the Conservation Commission. So we advertised, interviewed candidates, and Mark's, the, the breadth of his knowledge and experience is great. It's a great asset to the, the town of Dartmouth. So, you know, we came to an agreement and an offer, and that's with the contract that's in the packet tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
My name is Michael Keough, and I am the Chair of the Dartmouth Conservation Commission. And I'd like to let you and your fellow board members know that I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Garrett. Mark's been working with us for quite a while, as Sean just mentioned. First as an assistant to Mike O'Reilly, and then as the interim. But he's been our go-to guy. He really has a broad and deep knowledge of our substantive issues and subject matter. And what makes Mark unique in my experience has been the extensive professional experience he's had, both in private practice and public. He's been our leader, as I said before, and he seamlessly took that proverbial baton from Mike O'Reilly, who I think had done a phenomenal job with our Conservation Commission. But Mark hasn't missed a step. The, the, the commission is working as, as well as it ever has, and indeed, that's a lot to do with the way Mark has made us more efficient. He didn't just rest on the laurels of his predecessor. He's working and has worked hard on our protocols and processes, in addition to handling all of the day-to-day operations of the commission. And as a result of that, I'm pretty convinced that our, our efficiency and our ability to be responsive to the citizens of Dartmouth and their professional representatives has been improved. And I didn't know that we could do much better, but I, I think we are. So it's with extreme pleasure that I, I give you Mark Garrett. Mark has earned every bit of praise that has been given to him.
Well, that's a very nice introduction. Mr. Garrett, would you like to say something?
Well, I, first of all, thank the, the Board, Mr. Chairman and Board members, for certainly listening to the accolades, and I thank those who have given me the accolades. Just as a little background, I know some of you might know me a little bit. I've had a long experience in Dartmouth. I started working in private consultation for GHR engineering way back in the day. I tell the story that I flagged the weapons at Roundhill before Roundhill became Roundhill. That gives you a little bit of timeline as to how long and how familiar I am with the community. I've also been very familiar with Mike O'Reilly. We were very good professional friends, and when he asked me to come onboard to assist him, I, I did it without a blink of an eye. And I think that I am, it's very much turnkey, going from Mike to me and into the future. We're not identical. We have some differences, but I think the core of how Mike operated and how I operate is fairly consistent. And I think the reason I bring that up is not to compare me to Mike, but I think the citizens of Dartmouth, who have to deal with conservation issues, will not see a whole lot of difference, like, oh, here's the new guy. I think it's gonna be very fair, very consistent. And next to my hometown Plymouth, I probably know Dartmouth as well as anything. So I am happy to serve at the Board's pleasure and at the Commission's pleasure, and I thank you for the time and the consideration.
Well, thank you very much. But whatever Maria said about you makes me feel very comfortable, so, so I'm good. Any other questions, comments? Mr. McGarroll, please.
Yeah, just one, one quick question. And maybe this is to mostly Sean. Mike O'Reilly, when he was there, was, he was, he was the GIS Coordinator. Is Mark gonna take on that role, or are we looking for somebody else?
Uh, no, we've, right now, we're, we've split it up between the Planning Director is taking on some of it, and Chad Deschamps, our Systems Analyst, has been taking.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak to that just for a second?
Sure.
I think, you know, Sean and I had some discussions early this summer. I taught GIS at Bridgewater State. It's not that I don't know how to do it. I think the, the reason it's been moved is that the Conservation Commission in of itself, or the Conservation Office, does not have all the municipal data. Planning, DPW, they have more of the data sets, so it's a quicker turnkey. I speak to Mike. Mike was very good at GIS, but he spent a lot of time searching out where the data was and acquiring the data before he could apply it. I think if you center GIS in a place that is a data repository, planning or DPW, either case would work. I think it becomes a more efficient service to the community. And I think that GIS in of itself can bog somebody down if they don't have all the resources at their fingertips. So I think it was not necessarily a question of I couldn't do it. I just didn't think I was the best person in the best position to do it.
No, and I think that's the, I think that's the most appropriate answer, is because I know Mike was just, in his past, he's always looking for the data, and it needs to be where the data is. And if you're in an office and your data's not, and you're just, you know, it just takes up too much of the time, so. Mr. Chairman, if you wish, I'd like to make an, a motion that we approve the contract between the town of Dartmouth and Mark Garrett as the Conservation Commissioner.
Okay. Okay, we'll let Stanley have his head up.
No, I, I was, I was just gonna do that, but it, the, his position is Environmental Affairs Coordinator, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
Right. So I, I'll second that happily. Mr. Garrett, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We actually have two seconds.
Well, then make support then.
That's right. So let's do a roll call. Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Very much, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I also wanna make sure that the town, just to make sure that the town is well aware that Mark Garrett will not disappear around Christmas time, that he will continue to work for the town of Dartmouth.
I, 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 I do have a part-time gig, but I, I will.
Very nice.
As an aside, I do drive sled dogs, so I've been known to get into the sled in the snow.
We share with the salvation hobby bucket, we should not be concerned. David?
One quick comment. I was fortunate enough, Mark had just come into the job as interim. I was in a couple local issue meetings in the neighborhood, and I saw him in charge of the meeting, and he wasn't afraid to speak up. He took charge of the meeting, had good things to add, and I look forward to that same approach as he, he falls into being the leader of the whole department. So I think it's a fantastic appointment.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Thank you, Mr. Keough.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Oh, and actually, so I don't know if the Board wants to take a vote to have me sign the contract or stamp it for that.
Make a motion that we approve, that we allow, authorize Mr. McGinnis to sign the contract on our behalf.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Is there a warrant that we should deal with at the same time?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Mr. McGinnis to sign the warrant, the weekly warrant on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Well, you will see why you, why you stay up, and you might as well keep staying, but you know, that's a. Okay, I think we're all set with that.
Yep.
Again, thank you, Mr. Garrett and Mr. Keough. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have item B, Crispy Show. Do we want to take this out of water, so Tyler doesn't have to sit around all night?
Just gonna say the same thing. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
A great, great mindset alike. So, Mr. Ferrera, wel- welcome back. How's your progress?
Uh, it's going well. The project is almost done. There's just a little bit of finding sources for some cobblestones, pebbles, and attaching a door, lacquering everything, and it will be all set. I am here to kind of say, as Mr. Lancaster can confirm, I believe he's here. The original spot that was plotted for me to put the project was interfering with, I believe it was like water or electrical, it was some kind of utility. So, uh, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Lancaster, and I have actually worked out a new spot out front of Town Hall, and along with my progress, I will need to acquire new approval for the project to go there.
Okay. Easily, so moved.
Yes.
He's okay. I wish they were all this easy.
Yeah. I just wanna show the Board where it's, it's gonna go. So let me see if I can share my screen here. Oh, I can't share my screen, so maybe DCTV will let me share my screen, but the, the location, I think that Tim Lancaster identified three locations where it could possibly go. I think the best location is probably out front by the, where the drop-off boxes are behind those. I think that's a good location.
Great.
That sounds good.
Good access off the street. People can see it.
I do have it here, so let's see. You see that?
No.
Not yet.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
So Tim had identified these three locations, but I think this one right here is probably the best, because there's already a drop-off here, so people get out to drop things off or they, they drive through, so.
I also think that is best as well.
That's what counts.
Good.
As far as, as far as getting cobblestones, I don't know, Mr. Lancaster or Mr. McGinnis, can you reach out to the city of New Bedford and talk to them about some of the cobblestones that they have in the yard across the street from the New Bedford High School? There's a staging area near the cemetery, and there is a ton of cobblestones there. Can you ask them if we could, if Tyler can grab a few of them for his project? I'm sure that would, maybe that would, they would allow that.
How about the DPW picking it up for him?
They'd have to ask New Bedford first. I don't want the DPW.
No, 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 after their, after their permission, Sean.
Yep. Or Mr. Lancaster can use his truck and.
Whichever.
Of them, yeah.
And if I may, I actually have a image of my progress. So that is currently what the project looks like.
Nice.
Uh, the feet will be about a foot into the ground with the kiosk going eighteen inches deep, and the box going as deep as the blue feet, which is just a smidge under a foot.
Great.
Nice job.
Yes, very nice.
Tyler, so.
Yes, sir.
What a wonderful Eagle program, the Eagle Scout program that you've done. It's just a magnificent job, and I, I'd like to shake your hand, Boy Scout shake, so. All right, so officially, a Boy Scout shake, Eagle Scout to one Eagle Scout. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Harren?
Tyler, how many cobblestones do you need?
So it's probably going to be, depending on the size, if cobblestone's about that big, I don't know exactly how big the ones at that place in New Bedford are, but based off of them being about that size, we were thinking about twenty to thirty.
Okay.
Great.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations to Tyler. You're all set. Once you get the rest of your stuff, you'll sail right through, cuz you're all set now, so. And again, nice work, nice work.
Thank you.
Good job, Tyler.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster.
Problem. Have a good one, guys.
All right.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, let's see, I'll just see if there's anything else here that's quick. Should we, uh, let's see, who's waiting? Mr. Brulee, maybe we should do the E, the update on the Veterans Day event while he's here, so he doesn't have to sit here all day either.
Sure. Good move. Good move.
Welcome, Mr. Brulee. You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Good evening, folks. Thank you for, for letting me speak this evening. So the, I'm here on behalf of the Veterans Advisory Board and my office as well, and we're hoping to start up a new tradition here in Dartmouth to have a small Veterans Day service at the Grove. We, we had sent out some emails a few weeks back with a tentative itinerary, where we have, it's a welcome and intros, playing of the National Anthem. I've reached out to Mr. Flint, the band director, waiting to hear a response on Bugler. I don't believe necessarily we'll be paying taps, as that's generally reserved for Memorial Day and funerals and things like that, but I was thinking something along the lines of Retreat and Rebel, which, you know, kind of a little bit more, I guess, upbeat, military tunes. So I'll be reading a governor's proclamation. The Chair, Chris Ferrera, who would like to be here tonight, but he was working this evening down the base, I believe, and he's coming home now, so. We'll be raising a new flag, and we'll be some concluding remarks. We've invited the Police Honor Guard, as well as the three District Fire Honor Guards, if they would like to attend. I'd get to hear back from them, but I'm sure that they'll be involved. And I'm just kind of reaching out to see if we can not only do it this year, but moving forward, you know, set aside that day that we, you know, remember veterans that have served, that are still living, and that have, that have died. So.
Yeah, definitely.
We just had a little message that said that Mr. Ferrera, that Tyler was just here, is the true Bugler. So it sounds like, it sounds like a volunteer.
So Matt, why don't you, why don't you give the date and the time?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. So it would be November eleventh, for Veterans Day, rain or shine, at eleven AM.
Yep.
At the Memorial Grove at the Council on Aging. So like I said, it may grow a little bit in years to come with some more normalcy, but you know, with all the changes that we've had this year, maybe this can be something good. That's a good change that's come out of this year, so.
I, I agree. Mr. Tattelbaum?
As I said in my reply to the invitation, I'll be there myself, but I consider that to be a very special place. It's, to me, it's hallowed ground in town. My father and my father-in-law are honored there, and it's, it's a great place to be, and it's a nice central location. There's parking there, so I think it's a great move, and it's gonna be a, and hopefully, it's a good established trend, tradition.
Absolutely. And we're actually gonna be getting a, a new roof put on there. The Board is, they're working with the Technical School to have the, the kids get out there and do that.
Excellent.
I'd, I'd like to, to ask the Board to, to move forward, saving this Veterans Day event and have it as a regular, a regular occasion annually.
Yeah, that's fine. You making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make this motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McGarroll?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself.
Uh, Mr. Gracie, can I just add, so Matt, could you fill us in? I know annually, the, there's a Veterans Breakfast at the COA.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, Sean. So this year, instead of the Veterans Breakfast, given, once again, the, the situation, I was talking to Maria, and you know, the expectation, there was no doubt that something was gonna happen, so it was just, we had to figure out how we were gonna adjust our course, so we are doing a drive-through lunch. It's gonna be sponsored by the Representative Marky's office. We're gonna have a little service starting at ten thirty on the sixth of November, starting at ten thirty. That's when we'll have the media outlets there and have their speeches and things like that. And then that'll be at the actual Grove itself. And I actually went down and saw how they do the drive-through lunches, and they're really good at it at the Council on Aging, and they get the folks in and out, so. We'll have, you know, an area set up for veterans, and we'll be handing out the meals and the flags, and we have pins and, and American flags and things like that to give out to the veterans of the community.
And the, the date again, Matt?
Oh, I'm sorry, November sixth, sir?
Yeah, just so everybody knows.
November sixth, at ten thirty was the service starts. It's eleven, one o'clock, yes.
Great. Ten thirty and one o'clock?
Uh, ten thirty, the, the ceremony, and then eleven and one will be the distribution, sir.
Perfect. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I guess we're all set. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you. Nice work.
Thank you very much.
Good to go, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump back up. Let's do Cris Michaud, Lynn Broder, BO, Board of Health of Halloween Recommendations. Someone here to do that?
Good evening, Mr. Gracie. Can you hear me? This is Chris.
Hi, Chris. How are you?
Good, thank you.
You have the floor. I asked, the Board of Health had made a decision on a recommendation for Halloween at their last meeting. I thought it would be good for them to come before the Board, just to give an update. There's been a lot of questions about Halloween this year across the state. So I thought it would be good for Mr. Michaud to come in and present what the Board had recommended, the Board of Health had recommended for this year's Halloween.
Hey, great. Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Board of Health discussed this at their meeting last week, and prior to that, Governor Baker had made a statement with the state's position on Halloween. His position was not to cancel Halloween statewide because he felt that there would be implications or unintended consequences. And he noted that it would likely drive people indoors, which would aggravate transmission, or in other words, increase the risk of transmission of COVID-nineteen. I am in agreement with that. I also feel that there are other likely unintended consequences when communities cancel Halloween that can likely lead to residents in that community going elsewhere. In other words, you know, if Community X cancels it, then people will be looking to go to Community Y and Z and creating new Halloween cohorts. So you may call a family member, a friend that you haven't been in close contact with, and creating a new close contact. And, you know, once again, like the indoor gatherings, create a aggravation or an increased risk of transmission. So the Board of Health took all of this under advisement at their last meeting, and they made recommendations for best practices for people that wanna participate in Halloween. Following the outcome of tonight's meeting, depending upon how the Select Board decides, you know, we can further disseminate some of those best practices. Again, it would be contingent upon an alliance with, you know, so that the town is acting in unison. But if the Select Board so decides to, you know, recommend best practices, you know, some of those best practices, just in summary, would be items such as, you know, maybe some of the older children, you know, refrain, particularly high school age, but again, not banning that. Social distancing, wearing face coverings, you know, a, I wanna date myself, a Casper the Friendly Ghost mask, or whatever the new mask is for the kids today. While it's a face mask, it doesn't provide the protection that a face covering does. So, you know, wearing the face covering, social distancing, not increasing your cohort, which in other words means, you know, those kids that have been six feet apart in classrooms and whatnot, let's not all gather at that one child's house, and everyone ball up and walk down the street together, you know, hand in hand. So those are just a few of the minor recommendations. You know, another recommendation may be is that maybe people commence a little bit earlier, maybe a little bit before sunset, so that there is more adequate light, and people do not have to congregate along the sides of the road, especially in those neighborhoods where there are not sidewalks. And then, you know, maybe seeing some breakdowns in social distancing. But again, these are just recommendations, and the final, most notable recommendation would be is, you know, we understand that there are a lot of people, you know, Dartmouth is a large community of, in excess of thirty-four thousand, so that there are, you know, a fair number of people in the community that are concerned. And as such, we need to be respectful of those. So if the lights are not on, do not go on that property and leave that property owner to be, so that they are protected, you know, within their property. And that's pretty much a summary of what we discussed, and would be going forward with if the Select Board agrees. Thank you.
Okay. McGarroll?
Yeah, I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with all that. I mean, a few weeks ago, I had posted something regarding maybe the potential of putting a sign saying no trick-or-treating here, and the blowback from it basically was majority of the people said, look, you know, lights out, don't go. That seems to be the, the pro, the, the proper way of doing things. Having a sign saying we don't do trick-or-treat here may trigger antisocial behavior, but, you know, we'll see. I can tell you for what we intend to do in our household, my, my wife and I can tell you for uh what we intend to do in our household, my uh my wife and um. Her daughters basically are going to uh create uh a candy bag for all intents and purposes. And we're gonna deliver it to the twelve houses um that have children in it. Uh the number of bags for the kids so that, you know, it's there for them and whatnot. And we're also gonna, I, you know. We got plenty of bags and we'll probably have plenty of candy. So we're just gonna make bags and we're gonna leave it outside. Uh in a container and just, you know, just say, take one, please, you know, type of thing. So that way, you know, we're not opening the door and and whatnot. But at least. At least this is something that, you know. During this pandemic, you know, I'm not gonna say the kids really need this, but you know, the kids really need this. Um they're working, you know, the the kids are working under some very strenuous uh efforts, especially with school. You know, going to school every other day, um you know, online and the parents. You know, dealing with this also. And you can see it um in my household uh with my granddaughter and my wife, um you know. And um and my daughter. So it I think this is something that everybody needs, you know. And then the next event will be Thanksgiving and the next thing. Will be Christmas. So this is, it's kind of a tough time to have all this stuff going on. I mean, it was easier. I don't wanna say it was easier, but it was easier to social distance and kind of do things in your own little inner circle. You know, during the months of uh, you know, March through September. Um yeah, there's there's no major family holidays like Thanksgiving and Christmas. Um and also I made, you know, I mean, there is Memorial Day, but that's, you know, generally an outdoor thing. Same thing with uh. You know, Fourth of July, but um this is something entirely different. So uh I think the those recommendations are are. Are great and I I just uh think the Select Board should adopt them. So I make a motion that we adopt them.
Well, I'd second that, but I think a few people probably wanna talk first.
Yeah, Mr. Talabon?
Yeah, I, first off, um Chris, I, uh Mr. Micho, I wanna uh acknowledge uh the kind of work you've done since day one of this COVID. What you've done for this town to keep us safe, stay on it. Uh difficult coordination effort with Town Hall, with Town Administrator. It's remarkable what you've done. And here's another challenge that comes to us. And it sounds, your basic philosophy in Halloween is to give people as many guidelines as possible and hope to use their common sense. And their parenting skills to say, here's what we should do and let's follow the rules. Let's make sure we um we do things that aren't reckless, but uh. As many recommendations you can give, sounds like that's the philosophy, which I think is a sound one myself.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson?
Took the words out of my mouth, David. Um I just, again, I I just want the parents to so to make good decisions for their children. Um it's their responsibility. Uh and you know, the the people that are putting candies out, um. Let's get creative. Uh sounds great what you're doing, Sean. That's a great idea. Um I'm sure a lot of people are gonna have different ideas. Put tables out, uh whatever, whatever they can do to 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 make it uh uh clean and easy for the children. And more importantly, for the parents, that they can feel comfortable that their children are accepting uh gifts, basically. In in a uh clean environment. And just let the kids have some fun. They deserve it. Thank you.
Yeah. Personally, I'm gonna put a sign up that says, go to Sean's house.
He had a sign for y'all else.
The Frank's is that way.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh Chris here. Um so I would just like to uh just kind of follow up on Mr. McDonald's comment and um. You know, that really hits home with me about, you know, I believe that there is a need for trick-or-treating and all of this. Uh there is a huge mental health component um to the pandemic that I don't really believe is getting the attention that it needs to get. Um people are under extraordinary stress. And if we can allow this behave to occur, which is an outdoor behavior, which has been identified, an outdoor activity, excuse me. As a um one that which we should be promoting, knowing that indoor activity can be consequential. I see a value to this um with allowing maybe people to escape some of the stresses. That are becoming particularly overcoming, especially as we're entering the fall um and winter ahead. And knowing that cases and transmission is is increasing throughout the nation and the state and regionally. So, you know, I think that there is, you know, a positive side to this. That can help with um the health of our community and helping to de-escalate some of the stress. Within our residents, um and notably our children. Um finally, I would just like to um just kind of follow up on Mr. Tattlebaum's uh comment. Um you know, thank you for that positivity. Um it has been a team effort with the town's response to uh COVID throughout the pandemic. Um a lot of extraordinary players throughout all divisions of the town. Uh not only within the town's uh general government structure, um at the Town Hall, across all of the departments in the Town Hall. But also our Department of Public Works, our Fire Districts, um you know, all of our Fire Chiefs. Our Emergency Management uh Director, our Emergency Management um staff that helps him. Police Departments, EMS. Um it's been an extraordinary opportunity to serve the town during this time. And seeing uh and as well as, excuse me, the Dartmouth Public School System, to see us all coming together and functioning across all these just different divisions. Um as one team, working for the common good. Um I've been with the town for twenty-five years, come Jan- uh December. And um we've never had a situation like this. And we've never worked like this, but it has been um. Very rewarding to see how we're all working together, um dropping everything for each other's individual needs. Um and you know, just, I I I could name everybody individually, um but I would probably keep the meeting going for forty minutes. As I've named all the players, um departments reaching out to us um about individual concerns about their operations. It's been um, I guess that's the one positivity I can find in all of this pandemic. It's, you know, how we've come together as a as a team to work throughout this. So, you know, thank you to all those participants of all the departments, of all those even. Organizations like, you know, Stat Ambulance, who contracts with the town, um the Fire Districts, who, you know, while they're all separate governance in the school committee. Um so um accolades to all. Thank you.
Yeah, I I think it's a, it's a great town we live in and it's nice when everything comes together like this. So uh. Uh I will echo that you've done a great job, uh Mr. Micho. And I would entertain a motion to endorse the recommendations by uh Mr. Micho and the BOH.
Already made.
Yeah, we're motion and a second.
Okay.
I made the motion and Stanley seconded.
Okay. I I must have missed that.
Okay. That's why we're here, Frank.
Thank you. I appreciate the help. Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Yes.
One, one question, Mr. Chairman? Uh in terms of how, when the timetable is, the when these 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 uh product, these suggestions will be listed and how we're gonna do it in terms of town, is uh. Is that something we can do to help out?
Town website.
It's website. It's already been uh in Dartmouth Weekly as well in the paper, so it's the the press out there, but uh we'll make sure it's on the website as well.
Well, it sounds like there's gonna be some additional recommendations as well from the from the Board of Health as we go forward until the holiday. To keep updating. Is that the idea?
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
So um we do have um some recommendations that we'll be putting out. Um I would like to get those out tomorrow. Um that'll be contingent upon a number of um variables, which, you know, first and foremost will be um, you know. Emergency phone calls on a number of issues. So um but we will have them out, you know, ideally by the end of Wednesday or Thursday morning. Very, very late.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Great, great comments, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, guess we're all set. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate it.
That was incredible.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item C, signing the election warrant with Sarah Ruda. Hi, Sarah. Welcome.
Thank you. How are you?
Good, good. It's good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Okay, we have the election warrant. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, so I'm asking if the Select Board could sign the electric, election warrant for November third. But I was hoping you might indulge me a little to give a bit of an update about our early voting and the processes. So we have sent out approximately eighty-six hundred mail-in ballots. And we've had early voting now since Saturday and we've already had a thousand forty-five people come vote in person here at Town Hall. We've had long lines. Everybody's very excited um and well-behaved and excited to be casting their ballots. Um all of our absentee ballots have gone out as well as for all uniformed people. Um and our citizens that are overseas. Um our early voting, we were hoping you. I could share with the public that we will have it through October thirtieth. And all of those hours are on our website. Um during the week, we are open from eight-thirty to four-thirty in room one oh three downstairs. Um and that just leads me to the amount of people that we've had helping us out here. That includes poll workers. Um we have had lots of staff um at Town Hall that have been here. Um early mornings, including six AM on Saturday, to get people out their early ballots. And we have had um just so much help from the community and offers of help and support to get this um up and running. Um and then Cody Haddad, who is the um Director of Development, has also been helping me with the election. Um and he has really been indispensable to me. So we have lots of information on the website and people can call here. Um it is a little bit difficult to get us some of the time because we're all over Town Hall, making sure that it's running smoothly. So. But thank you for indulging my update.
Good job.
Excellent. Mr. Mickelson, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald.
Make a motion that we uh that we approve and authorize the signing of the election warrant for November third.
So Mr. McD- Mr. McGinnis, you'll stamp that?
If you vote.
Why don't we do that?
That's what it's for.
Okay.
Okay, uh we have motion and a second. Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Uh, Mr. Gracie, so before uh Sarah leaves, uh I just wanted to go over some things related to the election and our COVID. And how we're we're handling the two. Um but aside, Sarah and her team have done a phenomenal job. It's like. She's been a clerk her whole life, so she's really come in and done an excellent job. This is not, I mean, I mentioned this many times, but this election is by far like. Out there for elections. It is like not easy and the state has three different methods to vote and a lot of towns are scurrying and. You know, Sarah's kind of organized her team along with Cody. They've worked really well together, but they've really kind of gotten all the staff together too to provide a lot of support. So. Kudos to them. It's really, it's really been phenomenal. So. Um you know, they've gotten the the ballots out, but you know, we had, we've started early voting. It was busy over the weekend. Today, there were some long lines. Uh coming into Town Hall. Um so you know, we're, we really weren't anticipating like so such long lines this morning. So. I think what we'd like to do for this week is to have town offices open. But by appointment only, because there's a lot of staff in the building as well. So we wanna keep the offices closed, but open by appointment. For the week and then we'll evaluate what the uh turnout is like. And if it kind of fades out a little bit because there was a big rush for Monday. Or if it seems to be amping up, then we'll evaluate it at the end of the week for next week. Uh but also, and so in that regard, so the offices uh, you know, will be closed, but they can call, they're open. People can call and make appointments to come in for appointments. So we're gonna move that for this week. The collector's office, because uh taxes are due November first. Um and generally, the last week of uh the week before, um taxes are due is a big week for people to come in. So what the collector's office is gonna do. Um for this week, uh they're gonna have a payment uh table inside the front right door. We're gonna post this on the website, but the residents will make their payments at the right-hand entrance of Town Hall. It'll be clearly marked, all Town Hall payments. Uh from eight-thirty to four-thirty this week through Friday. Uh they'll be greeted by collector's personnel who'll collect their payment and give them a receipt. Uh but also, you know, as usual, residents can make payment um by the drop-off, by US Mail, online. There's a number of ways that they they can make payment. So. Uh that's what we're gonna do this week. And then, you know, lastly, with this turnout. Uh this board doesn't meet before the election after this, but um I just want the board's approval that uh or the board can discuss it. But uh the day of the election, um it might be helpful to close Town Hall to staff and general business. And just allow it to be a polling precinct. A- as you know, this parking lot is very tight. We're having some issues now where we've directed staff to use the new lower parking lot. That's not paved, but it's 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 um acceptable to use in in the field. But I just think there could be a really high turnout. It could get confusing in the building. And if we were able to close the building, we could lock down just the lower level for voters to come in and and leave. So. We won't make that decision until we get very close, but I just want the board's approval um. In case we feel the need to to close the town offices for the day.
Make that motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I I think that's a good idea.
On the uh, on the question, on the motion, um Sean, can you contact the school department and see if they can use that? Um lot right next to the Town Hall at Middle School uh for parking? And also to move the town vehicles into the stadium?
Well, we we're moving the town vehicles to the new lower lot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we've already done that.
That way it'll open up that parking lot because, I mean, with this, with the buses using the loop twice um a time. I wouldn't wanna use the loop for parking, but on uh Saturday, Sunday, that can be done um for additional parking. And then that kind of keep, keep that lot open as much as possible. Because that was one of the complaint. It was only one complaint on social media that, you know, it wasn't, the lines were good, but the parking was kind of tight. So.
The parking's tough on a daily basis.
It is, I mean, so.
We've also hired a second officer through the thirtieth to help us with some of that crowd control. Um and I should also give credit to the Police Department. They didn't have a detail officer because we needed it so late in the day today. Because we were reassessing and they gave us one of their patrol people and um rotated that person out to help us. To make sure that all of the buses could get out and that people could get in and out and safely vote. Um so I really appreciate that assistance at such short notice from Sergeant Lake and everybody else over at the Police Department.
Okay, great. Um we have a motion and a second. Uh Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I and I have a question. Um the people are bringing their ballots back uh by in hand. Are we still using both silver boxes out?
Yes, we have both silver boxes. We're checking them during the day and we, right outside the clerk's office, there is a ballot box. While we're open during the evening, we do put that in our vault, but there are three ways for them to drop off their mail-in ballots if they want to come in person.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice going, Sarah.
Excellent work personally and also you all, all the folks you're coordinating with. It's it's good to hear.
I've had so much support. They, everybody has been so helpful and cooperative. I I just really can't get over all of. Helpers that I have had. It's it's really heartwarming.
Great. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, item F, Mast Dot statewide exit renumbering.
Yep, so Mast Dot has been advertising this for a little while. They're changing the uh exit numbers to match the mile markers. Uh on a number of uh highways throughout the state. Um they've been advertising this as much as possible, and I just wanted to give the board an update. So it really affects Dartmouth. On Interstate uh one ninety-five where exit eleven A, eleven, eleven A and B will now be nineteen and nineteen A and nineteen B. Exit twelve uh will now be exit twenty-two and twenty-two A and twenty-two B.
Do you know how long the overlap? I know they're gonna keep the old numbers for a while in conjunction with the new numbers. Do you know how long the overlap overlap is?
I don't, I don't know. And I know, I thought I included it.
I think I heard one year.
I I wanted to say it was one year. I thought that's what I heard, but. Mr. Mickelson?
I believe they're starting, believe it or not, on Route one forty. That's the first start.
And one ninety-five starts October twenty-fifth through November twentieth, they say, so.
Yeah, and I believe it's a year also.
Okay. Great. It's good to know. At at least people can take the same exit, they just don't, that might not have the same number, but it's the same exit.
Be interesting to see how fast the GPS in cars.
Yeah.
On this.
Okay, uh item G. Okay, item G. Two thousand twenty through twenty-one, Serpent Community Commission Member Appointment Form.
Uh, yes, this is just to update our representative from the town. It was Deb Wender. She's retired and now Cody is taking her place. So this is just for the board to appoint Cody to take her place as our representative.
Almost.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations, Cody. Okay, item H, Route Six Corridor Study.
Mr. McDonald brought this forward. The Serpent is doing a study in the Route Six corridor and would like to include a section that is in Dartmouth in this letter. Just requests that part of that study with Mast Dot include Route Six and the western section of Dartmouth. And just to go along, this will go off to Serpent, but also to Mast Dot.
Yeah, I received a request from Paul Mission from Serpent. Westport is doing their study and they, Serpent felt that it was important to include Cross Road down to the Westport Town Line, the Dartmouth-Westport Town Line on Route Six also. That way it makes it congruent all the way and instead of doing piecemeal. So it's before the board.
Mr. Talabon?
Sean, is this going to include, do you know the, the depth of this kind of analysis they're doing? Does it include like traffic studies and intersections and?
It's going to, it's going to address the safety of the roads, which would include probably sidewalks. It'll also include traffic and also any kind of, any kind of accommodations to correct the way traffic moves and flows in and out of Route Six. Probably also may include the intersection of Reed Road and Route Six, that intersection there. Crossroads more than likely won't be because it was done. It was done many years ago. So I don't see that. Maybe they, they may tweak it a little bit, but right now I don't see that happening.
Is it, is it, would it be overstating the statement, overstating to say that with a real analysis of this road, traffic studies? And it could really help us in what the future development of the, of the whole section? Would we could integrate traffic study as well as reuse of some of these buildings?
Uh, the reuse of the buildings, not, probably not so much.
But that would be, that, that would fold into.
Yeah, I mean, any kind of road improvements, generally. The, the backlash, well, I don't want to say the backlash, but the benefits of a, of a of a road, of road improvement study and safety and transportation is future development, you know. And improvements to the businesses, to the area, so.
Thank, it's really important. Thanks for getting on that, Sean.
I, I assume this would also help the issue we've had with pedestrians being injured or killed on Route Six?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, at least it may provide a sidewalk and, you know, better access. But eventually, we're, we're going to be dealing with that issue. Sometime in the next few months. So I've talked to Mr. McGinnis about setting up a, a meeting with the state officials who are in charge of housing. And just having them, not so much a meeting before the board, but just have a general meeting with, with us and maybe one or two of the board members. Just to discuss why and, and give their thoughts into it and kind of share our thoughts into it as to, you know. Some of the things that they, they need to, need to, to address, take a look at.
Sean, is there a timetable on the study for the Route Six Corridor?
Not really. I would assume it's going to take probably anywhere from twelve to eighteen months.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. Sounds like progress. I love progress.
Very much so, yeah.
Okay.
So Sean, do you need an approval to send the letter?
Uh, oh, yeah, you might. That's, I'm sorry, I thought you made a motion to.
Make a motion that we authorize Mr. McGinnis to forward the letter to Mr. Walker of the, of Serpent requesting that Dartmouth portion of Route Six from Cross Road to the Westport Town Line be included in their study.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Good.
Excellent. Okay. Item I, Town Administrator Evaluation. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, can you pop that up on your screen?
I can.
And I'll say a few words about it before we dig in. And there it is. Okay. So what this, what this actually is, is a compilation of the five of us. Each took an evaluation sheet and filled it out. And I volunteered to put it all together. So it's one big compilation. A couple of points people should notice is the rating scale is one to four, with one being poor. We didn't have any of those.
Frank, can that, excuse me, can that be enlarged at all, Frank?
I'm not in control of it.
I can.
Excuse me, interrupting.
That too large?
No, looks, looks good to me. How's that, David? All right?
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as I said, poor is number one when we didn't have any of those. Two is average, three is good, and four is outstanding. And let's see, a couple of points with the comments, you'll see. They're cut, I cut and pasted those from the original documents that were sent to me. So if there's any misspellings, it's not my fault. Came from the original documents. And two, you'll also notice that I've tried to put as many of the comments as possible into the boxes. One should note that I use the nomenclature, you know, A, B, C, D, E, that kind of thing. But it should also be noted that item A is not always the same person. Item B is not always the same person, et cetera, et cetera. And that's because I took them in different orders. I was, I was dealing with it and doing the cutting and pasting and that sort of thing. So I guess with that said, is there, is there any questions before we dig into this? If not, if not, Mr. McGinnis, could you scroll it down to the, actually get to the results, please?
How far down? Tell me when.
Okay, I will. Thank you. So item one was evaluate current town-wide services, service levels in order to identify potential operational and organizational efficiencies. And technology enhancement opportunities which will streamline town processes, increase online service offerings and public exceptional, provide exceptional customer service to residents, businesses, and the general public. The average of all that with all five of us came out to three point five. And the range was in three to four. So no one was less than a three. In other words, it was always three to four. So. I don't know, would you folks like me to read the comments themselves or just provide time for everybody to read them or?
So what do you?
Okay. Comment A was in the process of getting town online for, online for many consumer applications so far. Even with pandemic, online services are growing and getting more accessible. Some items to review on town's webpage need updating by individual departments. Not all departments are under the supervision of the town administrator, but guidance should be given to provide cohesion. Comment B, one positive outcome from the pandemic was that as a result of online upgrades, improved technologies and increased online offerings. Our town hall's functioning during the pandemic was quite remarkable. As the pandemic has hopefully conquered, we, I believe we are well positioned to continue much progress in this area. Okay, could you just scroll down, Mr. McGinnis? Item C, you have met or exceeded all your goals. Item D, made good progress on this, but nowhere near completed. Anybody have any comments on that before we move on? Okay. Uh, I know, item two, expand economic growth, development and redevelopment efforts. Whoops. Redeve- redevelopment efforts to increase sustainability, growth, tourism and quality of life by establishing working relationships with chambers of Congress, business groups within existing business districts and the University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. The rating, average rating on that was three point one with a range of two to four. Comment A, hard to achieve in pandemic, but past experiences indicate good capability in achieving this goal. Comment B, you have developed a relationship with the university which we have not had in the past. You are fully involved with chambers and business groups. Comment C, the town does not have enough new growth to offset coming financial crisis. Comment D, although there is a great potential in this area, realistically, the pandemic has put an unfortunate hold on these issues. Can you scroll down? I don't know if there's an E on this one or not. Yes, there is. E, the first part of this is what's most important and haven't seen much results. Okay. I guess we can go on to the next. Okay, item three, evaluate new opportunities to promote informed residents, businesses and the general public on town events, municipal projects. And financial transparency via the website, social media, DC TV and news media. The average rating was three point three with a range of two to four. Comment A, outstanding effort in this goal, continued effort and to include more departments is important. Comment B, with your genuine computer skills, you bring a new look through social media and the news media. Comment C, there have been major improvements in this area, but the pandemic certainly puts a limit on this, on its potential. And comment D, not a lot of progress, but we don't know about it. I guess we can continue. Item four, evaluate opportunities for community partnerships and regional project implementations with a goal of providing high-quality services while reducing expenses. The rating was a three point one, range of two to four. Comment A, this goal requires the assistance of the board to facilitate regional efforts with surrounding communities. The ability of this being accomplished will require the effort of all. Coordinating the effort will be the task for the town administrator. Comment B, you had a plan to restructure the departments and at this point, we have staff well-trained and happy to cooperate. Community partnerships and regional projects are ongoing. Comment C, we have had some success in these areas, but in all fairness, the pandemic has put a limit on its potential. Comment D, haven't seen reduction in expenses sorely needed. Next. Okay, item five, other accomplishments, achievements, projects and initiatives completed in addition to the above stated goals and objectives. The rating was three, average rating was three point six with a range of two to four. Comment A, leadership direction, staff meetings and ability to pull people together for a common goal is outstanding. Comment B, the COVID challenge has proved to be a crowding achievement. Your leadership and organizational skill shows you at the top of your game. Comment C, implementing town-wide plans to initially deal with the pandemic. It's coordination with the Board of Health, creating a masterful plan to reopen Town Hall and organize, organizing the town elections and town meetings have been frankly incredible accomplishments. As the pandemic hopefully winds down, there is much, there, there is such great potential to achieve, to generate new successes. Item, comment D, outstanding work with COVID and the election crisis with key employees leaving at inopportune times. Okay, next. Okay. These are more bullet items. So review of general areas of strength or challenge, challenge. Item one is product productivity and thoroughness. So there's a three point six average on quantity of workload with a range of two, two to four. Three point two for quality of work completed, range two to four. Three point four rating for simultaneously handle several projects quickly and efficiently with a range of two to four. Three point two, attention to detail with a range of two to four. Three point four for organizational skills, range two to four. Three point two meets deadlines without prompting, range two to four. And three point eight reasoning analytical ability, range three to four. Okay, comment A, for the most part, items required for meetings are given in advance. Sometimes some information is lacking, but available. But then again, hard to anticipate what five different members of the board require at any given time. Comment B, your only challenge at this point in your career is to stay the course. Item, comment C, Mr. McGinnis is very well organized and has taken on the challenge of major new tasks and responsibilities created by the pandemic with vigor. At a time when creating and meeting every ever-changing priorities is critical. He has done very well. Comment D, does a lot of work, probably much more than we know about. Okay, next. Next topic is community and communication and personal skills. We have a three point six average for written with a range of three to four. A three point four rating with oral, range two to four. Three point two rating average for responsiveness, responsiveness to and communications with town departments and communities with a range of two to four. Three point two average handling of public information requests and comments, range two to four. Three point two average relations with public groups, organizations and businesses with a range of two to four. Three point four, public presentation, education, range two to four. And three point O, involvement in community activities, range two to four. Comments, A, communicating and involving yourself are your best skill set. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, I, I comment B, Mr. McGinnis had an eventful first year. Replacing so many key managers from day one, combined with learning to be in charge of a ninety million dollar organization was a challenge. There was some miscommunication and hiccups early on. However, as he assumed command, completed all the new hirings and grappled with the pandemic improvements and communication have certainly occurred. This will continue. Scroll, please. Thank you. Uh, C, comment C, quite capable with this, but sometimes we would use more, we could use more info for meeting prep. Could use more info about what is going on in town, even if it's out of our domain. Many questions from residents that I don't know about. Okay, next. Topic three, leadership and managerial skills. Three point eight demonstrates self-assurance, range three to four. Three point six, proactively find solutions and presents options to potential problems, range two to four. Three point six average works independently, range two to four. Three point four effectively supervises others, range two to four. Three point six shows good judgment, range two to four. Three point six creativity and innovation, range two to four. Two point eight actively communicates progress on assignments, range two to four. Three point O takes initiative, range two to four. Three point four delivers constructive criticism appropriately, range two to four. And three point four accepts constructive criticism appropriately, range two to four. Comment A, with the loss of the town clerk position weeks away from elections, your leadership brought everyone together as a team and made the progress seamless. Great job. Comment B, Mr. McGinnis has showed ever-improving leadership skills. The future should provide major improvements in innovation and creativity as our town hopefully moves from surviving the pandemic to creating new and creative solutions to the future direction of our town. Comment C, very good leadership skills, but we shouldn't have to wait until the year-end summary to find out about progress on assignments. Okay, final summary. Comment A, it has been a pleasure to work with Sean these past two years. I am confident the town is moving towards a more friendly system for permitting and information access with Sean directing and guidance. Comment B, Mr. McGinnis has done an extraordinary job in his first two years considering so many new and difficult issues were thrown his way. There is great potential for innovation, expense savings and new directions in town. With a master plan charter review and hub management plan in full view, there is such great potential. I do, do believe he is ready and prepared to make, take on these and many other challenges. Comment C, I am, I am very pleased of your accomplishments over the past two years from a rocky road in the beginning. Inheriting a new position of HR person, something you would not have planned for, shows that your ability to overcome these challenges and do the job you were hired for makes me believe that we have made the correct choice hiring you. You are truly our future. Comment D, it is my opinion that the town administrator has not handled the Bliss Corner issue and the COVID-nineteen crisis well. Chris Meeshow stepped up and did his job. I've spoken to several department heads and it is their opinion, things are not well in Town Hall. Comment E, glad Sean is here. He will, he will get back. Comment E, glad Sean is here, he will, he will get better with time and more experience and fill in some of the weaknesses. I've seen good growth since his hiring. I think that's it. Once again, Mr. McGinnis will need you to stamp this for all of us. Yeah, so you can put it in your file.
Okay.
And then you, you are included in the comments, if you'd like to make some comments or ask questions or whatever, anybody could, anybody is free right now, including you.
Okay, do you want me to go first or does someone have any other comments?
Um go ahead, you're, you're the only one speaking up, so help yourself.
Sure, well, thank you for the evaluation, uh you know, I always enjoy getting feedback. Um and you know, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you'd like to be informed more, which, which, which I try to do. Uh it's not always easy in an ever changing environment, but I do try to pass along information to the board that I feel is pertinent. I will um make more of an effort to communicate that and where we're at, I mean, one thing. Um you know, one of my things that I'm, I'm not great at is kind of tooting my own horn and, and uh you know praise, so I, I don't think that's gonna change, but I'll try to keep the board up to date on a variety of projects, I, I usually try to do that. Um but I will certainly make more of an effort to do that. Um and this was a challenging year, I agree, and um you know, we got, still got a lot accomplished. There's a lot to accomplish, as this COVID hopefully pans out and we can sort of get back to normal and I think, you know the town is positioned to really streamline services, uh that's really important. Uh and streamline services and streamline communication to the public, so. Uh that's the goal, I think, you know, these four goals, as I explained in my update. Um how important they are when I first uh established them and how we created a framework and tried to work on communication and transparency that goes along, you know, with not only the public but internally and with you as the board, so. I think we have a nice framework in place to build on, uh we'll continue to build on that and deal with COVID and, and like I said, you know, if something happens over the winter, things get worse, we're prepared to remain operational, uh provide seamless services to the town, so. Yeah, thanks, I will, you know, I've enjoyed working here, I enjoy the staff very much, uh there's the department heads are very knowledgeable and dedicated, I mean, you can hear from everybody, don't just hear from me, but um the staff here are very dedicated to the town, they really want to make it successful, um I don't think that's um sometimes that's not um the perception that's out there, but they really are great people, I think you have great staff, we worked very hard with staff that have come in um to, to look for the right staff to fill roles, I think you've seen that across the two years where we've replaced some staff. Uh and that's important, so and they care, uh they're dedicated to the town, they really want to make it a better place. Um so you know, kudos to them, um and it makes Dartmouth a great town, the community is involved, you are all involved. Um so it makes it a very nice community to live and work in.
Okay, one, one comment I would make to you is that uh it's about not tooting your own horn, I, I suffered, in my work, work career, I suffered from that. Uh because one always assumes that if you're doing a good job and you're accomplishing things that people automatically notice, that doesn't happen. And I, I would tell you that it's important that especially us, it's important for the whole town to know what you've accomplished. But it's especially important for those that are responsible for you, uh that's us. So don't, don't ever feel like you're gonna give us too much information, because more is certainly better. Uh yeah, as you get things done, even if you think it's a little small dinky thing to you, please tell us about it. Uh and so that we know, I learned a lot during, for me personally, I learned a lot during your uh yearly summation there that you gave to us. Uh and as I was listening to some of that stuff, I said, gee, these things that I just learned, I, I should have known about this before, that was my comment to myself. Uh and it's nice to eventually know about it and you, and you did good work on that, you've done good work while you, you're here, while you've been here. But it's still nice to get those little bits as, as you go along and then say, nice job, Sean, you accomplished this, nice job, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so that, that's my two cents on that. Just tell about.
Well, I would suggest that we, we went a long time before this evaluation came along and I think that we could probably schedule something going forward over the next six to twelve months. Um or whatever that period, periodic uh time should be, that we could uh uh set aside a half an hour to get some assessment of these kinds of details, because I think it's valuable and there are things that we need to know more, if we can ask more questions about, and set aside time to do that on a, on a periodic basis.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's certainly a reasonable idea. Uh I'm the guy that advocates all along for twice a year communication. Uh because we, we learned, I learned that when I was at Polaroid, in the last pay plan that we set up. Uh and the reason for that was purely for communication. Uh at the end of the year, you do a review and you make your plans for next year. And then halfway through the year, you would have a, a quick, a quicker review of where are we, are we on track? Uh and, and you had, try to be positive, of course, that, you know, things are going in the right direction, so.
Yeah, I mean, if I can just add to that, you know, one thing I'd like to do in this, you know, moving forward, uh particularly with the board is to meet individually with you regularly. Um you know, we meet, you know, every two weeks as a board, but I think, you know, I, it, it's good for me to know the direction that you all personally want to go in, but also as a board, so I can kind of make that happen and, and you know, so it won't be so uh it'll be more unified communication effort. So I think it's important that if, you know, we meet individually, I think it's helpful to see, you know, where you personally want to go with the town and what your objectives are. And I think I have a good idea, but I think if we are able to meet, you know, even quarterly, uh just to uh kind of make sure that, uh you know, I'm hearing where you all want to go and what your issues are and what are important to you, because you all have your own individual issues as well. Uh and I can help to make those happen and kind of coordinate staff around that, so. Uh I'll be looking to do that if you, if you're amenable to it.
It's a great idea, and you, and I was gonna ask you, you're the one that's gonna set that up, that's uh.
Yeah, I'll set up.
Is there anybody has a problem with that, by the way, let's just ask it that way, okay?
Oh.
Good. David.
Uh first, I want to make a statement. Um a, a, a few meetings back, we had a consensus agreement that we would not individually speak with department heads and someone made a comment about talking to a com- a negative comment about talking to department heads. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it was Mr. Haron, because it was his suggestion. We have consensus agreement not to do that, and I guess you decided on your own to go ahead and do it.
No, that was, I talked to them before we talked to that meeting.
It's neither, I, all due respect, David, that's not the type, this is not the time and place for.
I, 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 I made a statement, I all wanted a statement.
Okay.
I don't want a discussion.
Because we're dealing with Mr. McGinnis's eval.
Yeah, thank you, agreed.
Focus stay there, please.
Thank you, Sean.
Chairman.
Yeah, um I, I must say, um uh Mr. McGinnis, your presentation the last meeting was was out of sight, it was awesome, it was outstanding. Any of the words to describe how, how, how impressed we all, at least four of us were, were with you. Um with that said, um I'd like to offer Mr. McGinnis a an extension to his contract or a new contract, a two-year contract at the end of your third year. And to go into uh negotiations to, to uh to, to hire you for additional two years after your third year.
I thi- I think we're gonna have an executive session meeting to discuss contract.
Oh, no, I understand that, that would be, that would be settled at an executive session as far as that, but I'd like to, I'd like to offer that.
I, I would certainly like to see Sean stay in, you know.
I guess we need a second.
Well, no, I mean, that's a, this is up for a negoti- I mean, this is something we can take up in executive session, because we can't negotiate in the public.
Well, not, not negotiate his, his, his monetary contract.
But part, I mean, no, no, no. Also included in the contract is the number of years, that's negotiation.
All right.
So, and you know, so. When you, when you're dealing with language of a contract, that has to be negotiated, then that's you know, I mean, the, the final product is, is public. But until we, you know, we need to meet to make that product.
So I, I, I would like to change that too, I would like to uh to make sure uh Mr. Chairman, that we get it on the next, next, our next meeting in executive session.
Yeah, I think that was the plan, assuming it fits, Mr. McGinnis, let's see.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
Get that rolling.
Great, I'll second that.
Okay, do we, do we need to vote over that?
No, we don't need to vote to put it on the executive session.
Oh, because I, I thought it was, I thought that was exactly what the plan was anyway.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
The chair dictates executive session, so the chair wants it in uh as far as the um as part of the discussion for the next executive session or whatever executive session he was, that's entirely up to the chair.
Well, the, the only comment I would make to that is that we're gonna run out of meetings here soon, because they're coming to the end of the year. And we don't even meet now till after the election, so.
We have, we have also next year's meetings too, so it's not like, it's not like the world is gonna end on December thirty first, David.
No.
We have plenty of meeting, you know, with this, plenty of time to, to discuss this, I mean, if we we have two, we have another meeting, uh we have several, we have four meetings to go before the end of the year, one of those four can, this up to the chair can put this on the agenda.
No time but the, my, my, my suggestion, no time but the present.
I'm sure the chair is not lost on that.
Yeah, my, my, my feeling, as I said before, is that Sean is the one that sets the agendas. And as long as he knows we want to do this as soon as it's reasonable and it fits in a, in a pocket that, that is available, let's do it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else on this? Any more comments, questions? Okay. I think it was an interesting prog- process that I went through the other day, trying to, the other days. Actually, I thought it was gonna be, you know, a short term thing, but it was not as soon as I thought it was, it was gonna be. Uh but I thought it was, it was interesting to see the results and, and everything.
Frank, I'm sorry, I meant to, if you don't mind, I would like to congratulate you on the job that you did with the with this presentation tonight for the, for the, for the town in the meeting. Wonderful job, Frank.
Oh, thank you very much.
I truly appreciate it, one hundred percent.
Thank you, it's a kind of interesting getting back in data manipulation. A lot of manipulation.
Where'd you used to work, Frank? I forget, where was it?
Yeah, Polaroid, yeah.
You're out of business for going out loud.
That wasn't my fault. That was a corporate problem, not a local problem. The new benefit plan here actually ran very well.
I thought it was, I thought it was Kodak, but it's called a Polaroid.
Do you, do you know Kodak spent more in advertising every year than it was worth? We used to think that was a competitor, but it really wasn't, that's a much bigger company. All right, let's see if I can find my uh. Okay. Uh moving on, old business.
Uh yeah, Bliss Corner, uh no new update on that, I mean, I mentioned in the past that we're waiting for DEP to finish their uh testing uh of the individual properties. Uh COVID nineteen, I gave you an update pretty much to how it goes along with the election. So what we're, our plan is for the next few weeks to get past the election and uh the fishing pier, you know, we're waiting to hear from the state, so that's kind of in their hands.
Mr. Talawa.
Um this is probably a stupid question, but is there anything we can do as far as Bliss Corner, these testing goes with the DEP that could uh get people some information or we can do anything that would be, as, as said of what we're going through right now?
No, we've, we've been in contact with them and asked them to give.
I know you have.
Um and they, you know, they've instructed us when they uh have finished the majority of their testing. Uh so they're working with the EPA, they were in to talk about that a while ago, so. Um I'll touch base with them, we do touch base regularly, I'll, I'll uh work with Chris Meesho and see if we can.
I mean, even an official statement, we can put on the record for next week, next meeting or something like that, that people, I think people deserve to know as much as we can find out.
Okay, let's see.
Recognize it, I know you've done a lot of work with it, I'm not certain you haven't, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on any of the old business? I guess not, it's more of the same, basically. Uh minutes, I don't, do we have any minutes? I didn't see any.
No, no minutes.
Okay. Uh information and we have an information they'd like to share. Sure, Mr. McDonald.
I just want to um to note to the people who are watching or who may be watching at a later time that at the Harbor Masters website, there is a survey on the Dias landing feasibility study. Uh it's been posted on social media on several pages. Uh and I believe it's also on the town's website. Um if you have a moment, even if, even if you're not a boater, um this is still a crucial um study to take a look at in a survey. Um so please do so, um I don't have the proper link.
It's.
To have a master website, so.
If they go to what, the town's homepage, it's there as well.
Okay, it's there too, so please, thank you.
More information that wants to be uh there somewhere. Any more comments, questions? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to adjourn any seconds, Mr. Haron.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Two hours earlier than last week?
Good.
Mr. Talawa.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nicholson.
Thank God, yes.
You don't have to, you don't have to call me God, I'm not.
I, I didn't.
And I, and I go, yes, also, thank you all very much.
Nice job, Frank.
Have a good day.